Please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Lamar Rockington?
Here.
Jacqueline Catalini?
Here.
Dave May?
Here.
David Murray?
Here.
Stephanie Smith?
Here.
Kevin Smith?
Mr. Smith is running late. He'll be joining us later.
Sarah Stern?
Here.
Donna Getty?
Here.
And Damon Miller?
Here. Introduction of others present.
Dr. Andrew Doster, Superintendent of Schools.
Derek Popowski, Business Manager.
David Trulow of Soosir Gwall.
We did have not had an executive session in either of the quarters. Oh, we didn't have one? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Hauser advised me that at the conclusion of the last meeting, you had an executive session from 7:55 PM to 8:05 PM. And the tenants were all members of the board along with Mr. Hauser. Two items were discussed informational items and personnel. And that executive session concluded at 8:05 PM. That would note that Mr. Smith had just ended the room at 6:18.
Why don't we move on to the Facilities Report?
Sure. At this time, there's nothing new occurring with Facilities. We have, I can give you an update, that we have begun, obviously, with our contracting for the mowing of our properties and the maintenance outside the building. We are looking at projects for the summer, which would include bleacher repair down at the football field and as well as maintenance of some of the other areas down there, just to upgrade some things to avoid any potential pitfalls or possible injuries over the summer and into next fall sports season. We are also continuing to look at, I believe, the Core State's work for the coils that were fabricated for the two classrooms. I believe that work has been completed. I will double check. We have serviced the air conditioning, however, at this point, we have not turned it on yet in terms of running it in the district. And I let our Mr. Cohen know that once we had a stretch, forecasted stretch of weather that would necessitate that, then we would go ahead and start that. So to this point, though, the weather has been very agreeable, as it's only in the 50s today, for not running that to this point. So we're continuing to work out some things with our shipping and receiving and supplies and materials that come in in terms of distribution into different buildings. And that's something I'm working out with him in terms of job responsibilities and clarifying some concerns on that end. The only other thing that we are waiting on is still waiting on final work regarding the roof and the grant and when we can proceed in that direction as well. And that concludes Facilities for the Super.
Mr. May, do you have any questions regarding being the Chair? Yep. You were talking about the lawn service. Are we looking to contract differently or not with a different contract or but as far as their scope?
No, not the scope of work. What we had last year was the, if I remember correctly, going back to the turf tank conversation, that it would free up considerable amounts of time for a lot of the lawn servicing to be done in-house. Due to some recent conversations over the last several weeks, that has shifted. And there's no longer, I guess, a desire for that work to be completed during the day as it is starting to interfere with other duties for certain people in their positions. So we are back to contracting out for our lawn service at this time.
Any other questions regarding Facilities? Okay. At this time, we are going to break for a recess.
Recession.
Recession for an executive session. We will come back with details upon our return, but we will be back as soon as we can. Thank you. We are back in session after our executive session. Mr. Trulow, you have the details on that one?
Yes, Mr. President. The executive session started at 6:01. It went to 6:51. All members who are present will press the executive session along with Dr. Doster, Mr. Popowski, and myself. Items related to personnel and collective bargaining were discussed in the executive session.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our Finance Committee reports. Mrs. Getty, here in the Chair.
Well, I don't think it's on me. I think it's on Mr. Popowski. Does he give us any updates?
We'll be reviewing over our actuals by January 17th, of course, this will be on the 4/25. Just a little bit of an overview. If you open the PowerPoint deck, we'd be able to see the total revenues received year-to-date. We had budgeted at $26,113. Just to note that, it also includes, $26,113 includes cafeteria revenues in there. And year-to-date, we received $22,437,571. So we can see we're short roughly about $3.6 million or so in revenues.
Can I answer a question in regard to that? That revenue is primarily from where?
The main revenue is from local, state, federal subsidies. This also includes the kind of product sale that we received.
Right, but the deficit, is that primarily from local?
Well, we can see the local, we have a difference of roughly about $900K. The state, we have a difference. We have not received the latest subsidies yet, which would be receiving on June 1st, which would be May 30th, if you think that. We'll be receiving the final subsidies. That will also hit our IU transportation into that subsidy. So the difference in the reduced amount. So that would be reflected in there. The federal as well, not all type of grants we receive, not entirely sent to them as we receive yet. So these are, they'll be coming in. So we can see the number part is included in the other option. We can see that's a revenue of about that much.
Okay. So on our local revenue, that was based off of?
Local realis-- sorry. Local real estate taxes, delinquent taxes, transfer taxes as well.
Okay.
All the taxes.
So the 900-some-thousand that were behind, do we know if that's?
I would have to provide you a breakdown.
We don't know where that's coming?
Yeah, it would speak between one of the lines, but mainly it's out of the real estate taxes.
So we're close in regards to our collection rate?
I believe it was a 93% last year.
Say that again?
It was a 93% collection rate versus 95% collection rate. We are about.
We budgeted 95. We're about 93.
I believe it was about 93%.
Okay, that's right. Thank you.
On the next page, we see a breakdown of the total expenses combined, including salary benefits, departmental accounts, and other accounts. We can see that the other accounts, which actually includes charters, we'll see that that is almost close to reaching the full actual versus budget. And we still got another almost like month and a half left, right? This was in the beginning of May. So the department account, and we can see the encumbrance of 1.3, that includes the county IU bill. So that has not been paid. That will be paid in the next fiscal year's revenue, but include back to this fiscal year. So we can see that difference in there as well. And obviously, we get six months to pay to hit the salary benefit lines. But what this is not accounting for is the lump sum that goes in in June for teachers, for anyone that it's taken 10 months versus 12 months pay. This is not included for any curriculum activities as well. And also, it's not including our July and August, which gets approved back to this fiscal year. So this number will change mainly sometime in August, September. You'll see a true full number of the salary benefits in here. So the next one is a breakdown of salaries and benefits by professional staff, support staff, administration, athletics, and other. And as you can see, the other part, which is the curriculum or any stipend, that has not hit the end of June, you'll see that number be calculated as it goes through June. That's when the stipends come out. Then the next one, we see departmental expenses accounts. We have special education, and as you can see, special education is right now $2.7 million year-to-date expenses with encumbrances of $1,183. Again, the majority of that is county IU bill, but you can see that is pretty high or reaching, if not exceeding. We'll have secondary that is pretty on point with give or take. I'll have to look at their encumbrances and see if maybe those pay orders have been paid but not related, so this is something to work on. We can see the facilities is reaching their budget, if not exceeding by end of June. Technology is the big difference we've been talking about throughout the year. We budgeted for 126. We have so far hit $291,000. This is the difference. The business office as well, but that could be also some contracts. We do have rental contracts that were perhaps not budgeted correctly, but they actually are coming in higher. And as you can see, for the districts, we are pretty on point if not under.
Can I ask a very rudimentary question? Why is the secondary department budget so much more than elementary?
Within the secondary budget, we also have athletics that are included in that as well as the supplies and materials for some of the things that occur in different sciences. And there's just a greater need in terms of those materials at the secondary level.
Secondary also includes, sorry, the secondary level.
We have other expense accounts where we consider technical school. We are, we are had one with payments left, which you'll see in your approval of bill payments next week. We have a G5 curriculum. You'll see that in the G5, we had money carried over from last year to this year, but we only budgeted for 150,000. So that has been all straightened out and aligned with G5. We did a full withdrawal. So that's the reason why you see the differences. We did revision their budget with G5 state. As you can see, PCCD grant has not been fully received yet. That services has been paid. I made final payment for this bill payment, which you'll be approving next week. You can see charter tuitions. We budgeted for 1.3 million. You'll see the actual year-to-date is 1.8 million. So that's a big difference. Title, as you can see, not fully received. The nutrition not fully received or paid yet.
Under the charter tuitions, do we know how many of them are cyber?
I'll have to differentiate and do that analysis.
And do we receive any type of money back?
So the total we have received by, if we go back into that, is $59,000. It's under the additional revenue piece. So the other $59,000 is due to be received on June 1st.
So out of 1.8 million, we're getting 59,000?
So far, but I don't have a 59,000. So 118,000 we are receiving in total. And again, this is just to reiterate for the budget for 25, 26, I did add that into our revenue piece. But again, in Governor Shapiro's proposal, that is being taken off. So we left it on our budget. So that could be a minus for us.
But it was, well, is it possible that it's being taken off because of possibility of the flat tuition?
That's what they're, that's what they're going back and forth on. It's such a label, so we won't know.
I'd just like to make a comment for the public, if anybody watches this. That is $1.8 million our district has to spend on students that don't even go to our physical schools. So please contact your state representatives and ask for charter school form. Thank you.
Well, I would also include that the tuition that we're paying is different from our paper's.
Right.
Because it, and it's higher.
If you're really interested, look up the calculations on picking formula they use to determine how each district pays the tuition for charter schools. That will really blow your minds.
Sure. Thank you. So this is just an overview of where we stand as of May 9th, 2025, when this actual is. Thank you.
Does that conclude the committee?
That would conclude our committee.
Trying to defer. Okay. I assume no other questions regarding any of the slides? All right. Moving to public comments on agenda items only for this evening. We have one, we do have one action item, but we have no public. So Action Item 4.1, a motion is in order to approve and adopt a resolution approving the 2025 through 26 proposed final budget and authorizing public inspection and advertisement for the final budget notice as presented. So move on 4.1. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mrs. Getty. Any discussion? To state for the record that this doesn't include a 4.8% tax increase.
I'd also like to leave another note for the public that if you are unhappy with the taxes that you pay to support the school here within your community, you should take it up with your state representatives. Do a little research into how the funding is decided. Compare our district to Borrisville, which is roughly the same size. Look at how much more money they get than we do. And again, take it up with your state representatives because they are the only ones that have the power to change it. Thank you.
So I did a little digging. Our funding formula is based off of census data. Census data that is not controlled by any particular government entity other than those who respond to the surveys on an annual basis provided by the U.S. Census Bureau.
And I'm sorry, Howard, how is the census data collected?
By survey.
But is it, how do they determine?
I guess they just send it to targeted households within our population.
I'm saying, when PDE uses that data, are, where are they, how are they determining which of those surveys belong to which school district?
I'm about to.
Excellent.
So our current year budget is based off of the years 2021, 22, and 23. To the best of my knowledge, it is based off of those who live within the actual borough of Morrisville. Just of my knowledge. One of the items that is taken into consideration for the funding formula for the state is the number of households. In 2021, the number of households that were reported in the borough was 4,013. In 2023, it went down to 3,940, which is a drop of 73 households altogether. To the best of my knowledge, I don't think Mrs. O'Leary has kicked over any lanterns to create a major fire here in Morrisville, nor have we had a devastating earthquake. We've had minor ones, but we never had a major one. So to see a drop of 73 households in our small borough seems odd. When you, another item that is factored into the budget, excuse me, for the basic education funding formula is the median household. The median household in 2021 was 81,028. The median household for 2023 is 94,126, which is an increase of $13,098. So again, that's the median. That's the middle. 50% are below, 50% are high. Same thing with the number, or the number of households. I don't believe it was median. So now, I don't want to particularly sound like I'm picking on a particular demographic, but there is a demographic in, listed in Morrisville that had the number of households within the 20s. Then in 2023, it went up by over 100 or close to 100?
120.
120. So it went up by 100-ish. Their household, again, the median household listed the first two years was not reported because to the best of my knowledge, it was too minimal. But in the third year, it was listed, and again, this is the median, the middle. The median was $203,049. Now, to make this even worse, there is a margin of error. The margin of error is 90% of the median. Is that correct, Mrs. Getty?
So it's based on the standard error. It's a 90% confidence.
Okay, 90% confidence. Which, the margin of error is $174,870, which means that the actual income could be as low as $28,000 or as high as $377,000.
That's for 142,000 students.
Right. So, much like our test scores, when you have a class of, say, 70 kids and 14 of them do poorly on a test, you're now at 20% below proficient. 14 kids in a larger district hardly moves the needle. When you have households dropping by 73 and income going up as high as 13, almost 14,000, or excuse me, a little over 13,000, and you have these wacky, that's putting politely, margin of errors with household incomes that are, and listen, I'm not knocking anybody. If you make that amount of money, congratulations. More power to you. But it's, those numbers are affecting our budgets, our funding, which affects our budgets. And while there was all of this talk about a new funding formula and being unconstitutional, basically, all that they did was take the same data and move it around a little bit because they're still using the same skewed numbers. We're fighting an uphill battle. And I'm tired of it.
So basically, the state is pulling information from this federal database, assuming that that database is accurate, pulling it into their funding formula and then determining how much funding each district receives. And if, in our investigation of this just our borough, the question is, how many other districts are also way off in the funding that should be received? And how accurate is this funding formula? Is it truly representative of demographics of each of the school districts in this state? It really brings into question the validity of the funding. I don't know how else to put it. And like Mr. Miller said, we're fighting an uphill battle because as long as we're pulling the data from that database that is so skewed, nothing's going to change.
And if this data is, there's other data in regards to poverty, things of that nature, that show, for example, Bristol Borough, not picking on them. They get $4 million more in state funding than we do. More power to them. But they're showing higher poverty levels. Or we're showing higher poverty levels, but they're receiving more funding because based off of whatever numbers are being reported in our reports. So I don't like raising taxes. I pay them. We all pay them. We're not, you know, some people think, oh, you know, do you live in Morrisville? Yeah, you do. We do. You have to, to be on this board. And this is, it's, it's, it's almost honestly, I wish I didn't go down this route. I would have been happier not knowing. And the only way that we can make this up is by raising taxes. And it seems like to the fullest extent, every year, or start with other procedures.
By law, we're required to have a balanced budget. We, you know, we don't want the thought of Dr. Doster going to jail. So we have to balance the budget. We have to legitimately. So, you know.
You're on vacation, actually, I think.
We have to be, you know, so yes, we have to, none of us likes raising taxes. None of us likes paying the raised taxes, but we have to balance the budget. And until somebody hears us in Harrisburg and actually does something to correct it on a permanent basis, instead of year to year, this is going to be the same story every May and every June. So like Mr. was saying, if this is an issue, contact your state representatives. They are the only ones who can fix this. And trust me, we are reaching out. We are talking to them. It takes more than just us.
Any other discussion regarding 4.1? All right. Hearing none, I believe we should probably have a roll call vote on this.
Lamar Rockton?
Aye.
Jacqueline Catalini?
Yes.
Dave May?
Yes.
David Murray?
Yes.
Stephanie Smith?
No.
Kevin Smith?
No.
Sarah Stern?
Yes.
Donna Getty?
Yes.
Damon Miller?
Yes. Motion carries, 7-2. Great. Moving on to our agenda for next week. Outside of our usual reports from our committees and liaisons, we look like we have a student spotlight for Eagle Scout within our community. And then we have our reports from our administration as well, enrollment figures and so forth. Action items, 8.1 will be, which will be a consent motion for 8.2 and 8.3. 8.2, a motion is in order to approve the minutes from the April 16th, 2025 work session meeting. 8.3, a motion is in order to approve the minutes from the April 23rd, 2025. Eight point three, a motion is in order to approve the minutes from the April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five business meeting. Any discussion regarding either one of those items? Are we okay with keeping them as a consent motion?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to action items under education. Ten point two, a motion is in order to approve the Sabas, is it Sabas? My view literacy curriculum and professional development in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand eight hundred forty-three dollars and forty-three cents for three years as presented, and that is grant funded. And ten point three, a motion is in order to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Head Start memorandum of understanding as presented. Any discussion questions regarding either ten point two or ten point three? Is, is ten point two the, is that the total cost over the three years, or is that...
That's the total.
Total cost, yeah.
And just to state, that was already in the encumbrances in the actual versus budget.
And that's under what?
G five. Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add, if, when we have stuff under education, if we could review it first in the committee. I don't think the committee looked at these first. I read overall, and they seem fine, but I think that's helpful.
This was actually approved a year ago. The timeline was established last spring for when this material, these materials would be ordered, so these were...
The Sabas was, yeah.
Yes.
Any other discussion under education? We're done, moving on to human resources, there's nothing there. Business operations, we'll have our investment and treasurer's report, as well as the payment of bills, which will be listed, which is standard for this, for each month. Twelve point seven, a motion is in order to approve the legal services consultation agreement with Sweet Stevens, Katzen Williams for the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year in the amount of eleven thousand twenty-five dollars as presented. Twelve point eight, a motion is in order to approve the Bucks Mount, excuse me, Bucksmont Academy placement agreement for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Twelve point nine, a motion is in order to approve the Bucks County Intermediate Unit, number twenty-two. Twenty twenty-five, twenty-six Special Education Services Agreement as presented. Twelve point ten, a motion is in order to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six service agreement with Lakeside Youth Services as presented. Twelve point eleven, a motion is in order to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six client agreement with Delta T Group as presented, which is, provides our power of professional services. Twelve point twelve, a motion is in order to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six service agreement with Criticare as presented for substitute nurse services. Twelve point thirteen, a motion is in order to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six service order and agreement with PIMS People LLC as presented. Twelve point fourteen, a motion is in order to approve the settlement agreement with Student XL. Twelve point fifteen, a motion is in order to approve the master services agreement for Student XM as presented. Any questions or discussion regarding any of those items under business operations?
I just had a question under, on twelve fourteen, there's no amount listed in that document.
We're looking at, we're looking at...
Look at the amounts in there.
Thank you.
Any other questions, discussion regarding any of the items under business and finance?
Twelve point ten, the Lakeside Youth Services, we have a number of slots similar. I wasn't sure how much that actually cost, the cost is... Or how many slots, if I understood it correctly, how many slots we have, and then after that becomes...
It's supposed to be for one Lakeside counselor, it should be around ninety-seven thousand.
I can give you a number of slots.
Right, because this one isn't, this one's not for the counselor, right? Is this one for their placement at the different schools they have? Maybe I didn't understand.
I'll give you a number of, in all fairness.
Okay, maybe I don't understand enough.
But from my understanding, it should be a ninety-seven thousand for one Lakeside counselor. And it should be covered by this, this, this one.
I don't see the price in there at all. Just like before, you know, you sign it, what exactly, how much is it?
Any other discussion regarding any of the items under business or finance?
Are the settlements new, or are these like continuing students or...
These are, these are settlements that we've been aware of for the last several months. This is just the finalization of them.
Anything else? Going once, going twice? Are you still, is everybody good?
Yep.
Everybody's good? Okay. I want to make sure everybody has their opportunity. All right, then moving under policy, two action items. Thirteen point two, a motion is in order to approve the second read of the policies listed below. Thirteen point three talks about approving administrative regulations, but I don't believe we have any. If they are, they'll be added under either there or new business, wherever they have to be added. Any questions regarding policies? I'll be working with Ms. Waters tomorrow to get the first read for the policies. So that would be fifteen point one, and we see under new business. We just did not have the time to get it before the... Hearing no questions regarding policies, under new business. So public comment for non-agenda items, we have, again, no public here. And we have nothing under announcements. So I guess we have, does anybody have any other announcements that they want to add before we adjourn? All right. Motion to adjourn, so move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Schmidt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, abstain, motion carries nine zero. Thank you, everyone. Good night.